Mayor Williamville Edwards. Mayor Pro Tem Mark Baker. Councilmember Catherine Brown. Councilmember Connelly DeDuns. Councilmember Helen C. Willis. Councilmember Naomi Gillian. Councilmember Rosie Jackson. And Councilmember Chris Williams. Mayor, if you'd like me to do that before two stations is going to be done by the city of Manchester, but the city of Trinity. Let's go ahead and listen to the governor.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So as you are aware, we recently completed a sanitation request for this proposal process that did not produce a sanitation vendor for purposes of city sanitation. So we are in a time crunch currently. So you have two documents that are before you. You have an emergency ordinance and you also have... Mayor, you just said sanitation.
Let's see.
Oh, I followed that up. That's what...
Go ahead.
Okay, I followed that up there. So I'll back up to the truck ordinance. So the truck ordinance, so we have new legislation that came out that requires Fulton County to collaborate, join in, give consent over whatever legislation we put in place. This is restricted to streets that share commercial and residential properties. Now, we have met with Fulton County. We initially presented the trucking ordinance to Fulton County in its present form, and Fulton County asked us to collaborate with the representative from the Fulton Industrial District as well as Fulton County and our staff. And we did have that meeting. We had a very productive meeting, and we were able to come up with a list of items to propose to the council as far as amending the trucking ordinance. So what you have in front of you is you have the list of items that we were able to tentatively say that we would present to the council. And when I say "we," this is the individuals on behalf of South Fulton who met these representatives. And the title at the top is summary of proposed trucking ordinance changes. And these changes would include lifting the restriction along Cascade Road from Atlanta to Bearin Road and from West Parkway, from West Park Parkway to Fulton Industrial Boulevard. It would also include the city lifting its Cascade Memorial Road restriction. It would include the city lifting a restriction along Buckingham Road from Roosevelt Highway to South Fulton Parkway on the north end and from Royal Park on the south end. The city lifting the restriction along Stonewall Hill from Roosevelt Highway to South Fulton Parkway. The city lifting a restriction to allow trucks coming onto Welcome All Road from Roosevelt Highway up to the Welcome All Road Bridge. The city lifting a restriction on the small stretch of Riverside Drive between Campbellton Road and Water Road. The city lifting a restriction on Bearin Road toward Cascade Road to Atlanta. And that's the Atlanta location is going to be the Detroit Creek Bridge. And as well as the city changing its weight classification from 6,000 to 26,000 pounds. Now, these were the concessions that were discussed when the council in Fulton County and the Fulton Industrial Representatives convened. However, following that meeting, I received a communication from the county attorney advising that the county also wanted the city to sit down with trucking representatives, East Point and the city of Union City. So we had that conference this morning. We had representatives from Fulton County, Union City, East Point present during that meeting, as well as David Clark, who is facilitating the drafting and the majority of the communication on Fulton County's part. Anna Roach was also present for the conference. And what was discussed and provided to me this morning, they're... So East Point is pretty much, they said they had no objections at this point. So East Point is, we have no reason to believe that East Point will have any issue at the present. There were concerns that were brought up from representatives, trucking representatives, and this includes Willie Galloway, as well as, I believe, a representative from a company called Lincoln. But these were some of the concerns they asked the council to consider in addition to the concessions that were made at the meeting with the council or representatives. And these additional concerns were they would like for, to be able to enter onto Derek Road along, off South Fulton Parkway, at least to the extent that Union City has jurisdiction. And I think that would include essentially giving them access to some commercial facility that's being built off Derek Road. So they would like to egress into that facility from South Fulton Parkway. They would also like, they would agree to having a restriction off Flat Shores to the east of Body of Christ, where they would prefer for the other half that's currently demarcated on the map that I provided on Flat Shores to not be restricted. And they would like the city to lift the restriction on Fellwood up into the north of Royal South Parkway. And they would agree, they would also have liked to have it unrestricted north of Flat Shores to industrial, to the industrial buildings that are on Buckingham. And they would also like to have it unrestricted between... They said there's a street that's on South Fulton Parkway. They didn't have the name of the street, but they said that it was between Jones Road and Short Road, but that there is an area allegedly in rent that is all Union City territory. So they asked me to look into that. So these are the issues that they brought up. So what I'm presenting today, and I'm presenting this document for first read, and that's the ordinance that you have in front of you. The ordinance that you have in front of you only contains the concessions that were made with council members present, and that's the summary that I provided to you. And David Clark has prepared the attachment that outlined the restrictions pursuant to those discussions. And I would just like to entertain the, get the council's feedback on any of the additional items that I proposed today. We don't have to resolve this today. We will have a second read on this by September 11th. The hope is that whatever the city, whatever the direction the council will go for, then we can confirm that and present that to the commissioners, that they will have sufficient time to review the order meeting on September 19th.
Okay. How's the local board? We've made all the concessions we've been made. Now, as far as Derek Road is concerned, the Derek Road Parkway where they have the Walmart.com facility, there are two Derek Roads. And there's a Derek Road that leads to residential community and a school. And we as a city have, we had to go through a lot of rhetoric just to get Derek Road repaid. I think they should be in the process of repaying the Derek Road. I get consistent calls from parents and residents on that road about how that road was left not properly resurfaced. It was torn up because of the destruction of Walmart.com, and it was never properly resurfaced. The Union City part was resurfaced, but the city of South Fulton part was left not properly resurfaced. And so I'm not making any concessions when it comes to anything else in District 3 regarding this truck ordinance. Now, the Derek Road Parkway, the egress and ingress part, that's Union City. I have the control over the Union City part. And going in that Walmart.com, I want to be specific. On the South Fulton Parkway, there is a Derek Road Parkway that you can enter in and leave out to Walmart.com. What's happening is that they're not using that part. They're not using that. They're coming down Stonewall Hill. They're going down Derek Road, and they don't have any interest in those areas either. That's the only area they're supposed to enter in. They're supposed to go in and out that road. So while they're asking you for concessions for that, I don't know.
Well, specifically, it's coming down South Fulton and turning onto Derek Road to where Derek Road in Kalawita is that portion of Derek Road. Where if you turn, if you make that left and you keep straight, you will eventually hit Kalawita.
Okay, so that's on District 4 side. Mrs. Gillian, Mrs. Gillian.
She'll be there to respond.
You mean this is on District 4 side that they're asking.
So this morning, we were presented with a request to have the council entertain the trucks' ability to turn off South Fulton Parkway and have unlimited access to, I think he said it's up to 1,000 to 2,000 feet, but it's just, it's the area where they're building the new warehouse at the corner of Derek Road, where Derek Road eventually lets out into Kalawita. And they want that 1,000 to 2,000, or however many thousand feet that is where the warehouse of us to be able to freely turn off South Fulton Parkway to that portion of the road.
I'm going to yield to you on that one. I just wanted to hear that. I was... The other thing is, we met Catherine Brown, myself, and Mayor Edwards and several staff members, went to FIB Boulevard yesterday for the quarterly meeting. And Councilwoman Brown sent you an email requesting that we lift restrictions of the plumber.
And those are incorporated into this.
Okay.
Yeah, I've incorporated all of this. So every concession that the council members have made in meetings, I've incorporated into this.
Okay. Willie Galloway is a representation for several of the truck companies in Union City. We've made all the concessions. As far as I'm concerned, with District 3, that was one of them.
Well, my concern is Fulton County not kicking this guy out by saying that we didn't at least entertain. They haven't asked us to entertain these concessions. So my preference would be that you just vote on each one and let me know whether I can amend the ordinance to include it.
I understand, but I'm asking residents, we're at this point going to need you to come to the next commission meeting and request for commissioners to support what this city wants regarding this truck ordinance. This is our city. When it comes to paying for repaying our roads, it's our tax dollars that have to repay these roads. And so you deserve the right to say that you do not want commercial trucks on your streets. I'm asking you to tell all your neighbors to come to the next county commission meeting.
That's September 19th. Now, we don't have to make this vote today. If you want more time to talk to your constituents and to look at these proposed meetings, the ones that were given to us this morning, we can make the, go through and make the vote on these individual items on the 11th.
Before we go further, I do think that the message has to be clear to the county members and have enough to go through, even if Mr. Willis says that he's paying more than we are, to say he had made. His words have to be clear to the county. All right. Make your first move to the Councilwoman Jackson.
I concur with Councilwoman Willis on some things. And the main thing is, I'm not alleging, because they have actually come through our residential areas. They've been careless about our residents. And Union City has actually put up a no-truck sign coming from the 138 coming down Buckingham to no trucks. And this is their, what do you call this thing? This is their industrial piece. But they have a big sign up saying no trucks. Not anything about weight is just clear, no trucks to come down Buckingham into their residential area to come to their facility. But you want to upset our schoolchildren. You can come out with Flat Shores where we have Fellwood Elementary School, and you want to come down Fellwood to come down where Fellwood Elementary School is, where Vannaprop High School is, with some trucks? Oh, come on now. I'm trying not to get passionate about this, but I am. But I'm not, I'm not doing it. I'm, yeah, we just, they just repaved the streets from all the holes. And Bill, you know that crap that's on Fellwood. All the holes and stuff that we have, they just repaved. So you're going to come down and put more holes down the street? And Union City's not putting in a dime. They won't even hardly cut the grass going down South Fulton, where they, and it's their property in, they won't hardly cut the grass. No, I'm not, I'm not doing that. Not today.
I would say, as we continue the conversation...
They won't even cut the grass.
Excuse me. I would say, if we continue this conversation, that we stick to the issue.
It is the issue.
This is the issue.
And, you know, calling the name and stuff like that, we know we, let's just stick to the issue at hand and then go from there. Okay, the next person will be Ms. Gillian.
I have two comments, and I'm passionate about this. I'm passionate about the trucks. I'm passionate about the warehouses. I'm passionate about the air we're going to have to breathe. I'm passionate about the safety issues, because there is no infrastructure improvements in South Fulton County at all. Yet, more residential's going up, more trucks are coming. And so I wanted to make a comment about two things. Number one, Derek Road, that the part of it that is in District 4, that massive warehouse right next to the High Grove subdivision, that section of Derek Road is in Union City. So there's nothing that we're going to be able to do about that section right there. That's the only section that they can travel in, because it's in their city. After that, this in the city of South Fulton is off limits. Those folks that live on that street are going to have to endure a lot from this. So that's my point about the Derek Road section that's in District 4. I'm confused about Jones Road and Short Road that you spoke about earlier. And the reason being, Short Road intersects with Cedar Road. Hall Road intersects with Cedar Road, and it's unpaved. Going down Hall Road, it intersects with Jones Road. And Jones Road, part of it is unpaved. So I don't know whether the trucks are trying to come down an unpaved road or not.
Well, they said there's a road, they didn't have the name, but they said there's a road that's between those two roads. Between Jones and between Short Road.
I know what the roads are. Okay, I ride down Jones Road to see how much trash has been dumped. I know it intersects on Hall Road where they dump trash, because these are areas that are unpaved, and there's not that much development down there, so you get down there. So I'm not understanding what all that's about. And we know that Jones Road, that intersects with Ninety Two, and so this Hall Road, but we know that Jones Road is a real issue as it relates to traffic. So I don't know what is being, what they're talking about, but Short Road is off limits. Cedar Road is off limits. Hall Road is off limits. Jones Road is a state road. Nothing that we can do about that. So that's all I have to say about it. But it's, it's just ridiculous. And, and I don't know what to say to the constituents, because their position is, you know, what, what's the city doing about it? What are you doing about it? And as you know, you know, I wrote an open letter to one of the developers, and I had it vetted before I did, and I wanted to know, is this really what you want to do? And they came back with, you're going to put a park there. So we're going to refuse while we walk in that park. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gillian. All right, straight up, Ms. Council.
My question is regarding to the weight classification. Can you, I guess, give me their reasoning behind going from 6,000 to 26,000, or is that a standard?
No, it's not necessarily a standard per se. So your current ordinance has the weight limit at 6,000 pounds. Fulton County's ordinance has the weight limit at 36,000 pounds. So there's a substantial difference between what we have in place and what Fulton County had in place. What Fulton County has asked through David Clark is for us to adhere to the state CDL A classification license weight standard, and that would be 26,001 pounds. So they're asking us to not necessarily do whatever they were making session to, at least go to that state code section level.
Okay.
Mr. Koolie? I'll yield to Mr. Gillian. Just please.
Yeah, I wanted to know whether now the 26,000 is for all streets, like 36 were 26?
Yeah, 26 would be, would be consistent across the board. And I'm actually glad that you brought this up. The question was posed this morning by one of the trucking representatives. He wanted me to confirming the council also that this weight restriction would apply across the board. And that anyone who was under that weight restriction, they wouldn't have risk of being taken or stopped.
Mr. Koolie, do you have more? I just, I'm a little confused. I just have a clarification question. So our previous, when we passed this ordinance, was it inconsistent with state law, or are there just people that are uncomfortable with it?
It was not inconsistent to the extent that it was illegal. But was it inconsistent to the extent that there was a substantial difference between the state laws of classification under that provision and what you had? Yes. There are people, particularly representatives who I spoke to in the trucking industry, who think that the number being 6,000 would include a large number of people if this ordinance wasn't intended to capture.
Right. I just want to clarify that for the record. We didn't pass something that was wrong, or just people that...
It wasn't, yes, it was not unlawful, or just...
They're just people that don't like it.
Don't like the, the number, correct.
All right. Thank you. Mr.?
Let me just say one thing. I agree with everything I've been said up here. We as elected officials, our job is that we must look out for the quality of life of our citizens in our city. This is what happens when we don't have intergovernmental cooperation. What I mean by that, we plan for our people and nobody else. Even though our boundaries touch, we talk about intergovernmental relations with fire, we talk about intergovernmental relations with police, I think it has to go beyond that. I think it's something called regional planning, Mr. Donald, that is the issue here. And until we get to the point where we have regional planning, this is always going to be an issue. And the people have to come to the table. These trucks, and I can tell you, I've been on these streets early in the morning, and I've seen it. Paxton Road, Thames Road, Stonewall Hill. And I got to tell you, as the mayor of this city, it curls my blood. It curls my blood. Because I know that these are well-established communities. So there's got to be some regional collaboration, Mr. Donald. I don't know how we're going to do it. Maybe we need to start that process as we go into the year. And the other thing is that people are putting a whole lot of interest on it. Ms. Gillian has mentioned it several times. There's an environmental issue here. No doubt in my mind, there is an environmental issue with truck fuel going through residential neighborhoods. I believe in talking things out. I believe in give and take. And I think that that was the reason why we had the conversation in the first place. And I think where we were and where we are now, there's a considerable difference.
Yeah, we gave them that.
There's a considerable difference. Issue is now is, do we go any further? There's going to probably be another conversation, I guess. But when you start talking about, see, when you start talking about coming down a residential highway with a, with the tonnage that you have, I would like for you to also talk about if that street go bad, you're going to have to pay for it. Because it is a burden to the taxpayer.
Yes, it is.
It's a burden to the taxpayers. As well as, I've seen people come out of that Walmart on the Derek Road side and was not supposed to take that right turn. On Derek Road side. I don't know about the other Parkway Derek, but was not supposed to take that right turn. And I've talked to people in other municipalities and brought to their attention that, along with the picture I took, brought to their attention that this should not happen again. I haven't seen this since they put up a sign. But then the other part of all this is that how do we get the message to truckers who don't, who do what they want to do, because they're interested in getting the shortest route to get to their destination?
Fine.
And so the answer to me is always, well, enforce it. I got police officers running neighborhoods. I got police officers making calls. If anybody thinks we're going to put a police officer out there all day, or most of the day, to run down the trucking mistake, that ain't going to happen. That ain't going to happen. So we got to go to other methods and which, yes, the other methods in which we are to curtail this thing. It's been going on for a long time. Derek Road, I intentionally ride down Derek Road at least, as well as at least four, five times a week, just to remind me how bad it is. So I would say to you all, this is, this is, there's many issues. There's some things we need to talk about, are prepared. We need city collaboration, we need regional collaboration. We need to make people understand that. You driving these trucks. Matter of fact, I'm going to tell you, in the last two weeks, I have run five trucks out my neighborhood, Ms. Gillian. Had them towed. Try the trailers, with me and Ms. Gillian. Because some trucker don't want to pay the money to go park in a legitimate truck stop lane. They park in the ingress, egress lanes of our subdivisions. Just had one at my son's house, went to my son's house, that was one single history, early in the morning, had towed that one. So the message that we're sending is that we here in South Fulton, we want to be ever vigilant about our quality of life. That's just, is the message.
Exactly.
All right? And this board today seems feels that we, we're not going to step any further, then that's just a fact. And it's up to the other folk to, to talk to us and see if there's any possibility of conceding on anything. So I just want to put that out there. I can have to, I'm not, I ain't mad with nobody. I'm just mad with what happened. All right? The effect that's having on communities. And I'm not talking about just a little national, I'm talking about at my house, at my house, where I had to remove five trucks, because they refused. At last, let me say this. Even though it may be legal, it's another thing we have to consider. Parking in the right of way is wrong. I don't care what this, the ordinance say, Ms. Koolie, is wrong. If, if you're coming, a right of way is supposed to be open in case you have an accident, you can veer off the road and be safe. But if you veer off some of these roads now, you run the back of 18 wood, and they sit there for two, three, and four days. I don't have the answers, but I know this is a good start. If this is all that we can do as a city, I will back it 100%. I think, Mr., let me make sure I got it better, because you know how to get me up here. Ms. Willis?
I just want to understand this ordinance. So we have a trucking that we passed that Councilwoman Brown and Jackson sponsored. So is this going to be an amendment to the original ordinance to...
This will.
Okay, so amendment to the original. Okay.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add one more thing. I just think it's really unfair that our city has to make all the concessions. And everybody else could have their autonomy in their city. No one came to us and had a... No one came to us and had a conversation before they went and called the state legislators to legislate a state law that requires us to request a resolution from the county in order to enforce our own truck ordinance. That was not right. So while other cities and, and other attorneys are asking us to make concessions, where were our concessions? When they did, and they did it under our nose, behind our backs. And now we, as the largest city of the eight cities in the south, have to go to our county commission and ask for permission to enforce our own municipal policy.
This is crazy. Okay, uh, I'm gonna end this conversation with Ralph, because I do want to go down and get this list done. Ms. Ralph?
First, ma'am, I want to thank you for your comments. I think they are on target and I think our council are definitely on one accord with this. I think we've made tremendous concessions. And as Councilwoman Willis said, no city has had to go through their commission to get approval when we, when we opted to self-determine.
Right.
They didn't go to our delegation that represents this area. They found other legislators to, to pass a me and Senate Bill four forty-five to require us to go to the county to get approval on our own. It is not right. Um, this is not, um, this, one, I think the county needs to hold the other municipalities to the same standards that they're asking of us. I think, um, we've, um, come to the table in the spirit of collaboration and concession. And I think what we have before us today is really a great effort. We made all kind of concessions and I think we're at the right place. I think, again, our message is we, we support economic development, but we have to balance the interest of business as well as our residents. And I think what we have before us is what we need to do in terms of moving forward on one accord.
Uh, what I would like to do now is, 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 Madam Attorney, is that, first of all, I would like for you to look into the issue of home rule. In terms of that ordinance that, that came down from the state, I, I think that may be an issue of home rules.
Yes, as far as the-
Okay, actually, let's, let's talk about this in exact concession.
Okay.
If we can, I, if you may, one hundred percent.
You know where I'm going, right?
Yes.
Alright, okay. At this time, let's, let's, uh, I think we've had some conversation about some of these. Let's, the vote we, we're taking now is to let you know that, how you two respond as we go forward.
Well, actually, you know, we need to take a vote today. Um, this is your first read of the ordinance and-
I hear you.
Oh, okay.
I just want to show some unity. So is it, I'll, I'll ask it of the members, is that are we, are we inclined to accept this? Whether this is our, this is our proposal and, uh, we're not going forward with anything?
Right, but this ordinance needs to have amendment on it. It doesn't have amendment on it.
Um, it should, but I mean, if you look at-
Well, the ordinance is gonna come back for, for review, right?
Right, and that's what you just said.
And red line changes.
And red line changes.
Okay.
Okay.
So are we in agreement that this is where we stand?
Yes.
Let me just hear from, if, yes, yes. Baker? Jackson? Willis? Ralph? Jones? Ms. Gilliard? Okay, so you have a opinion. Alright, Ms. Cleve?
Would you like to continue with the next item with the city attorney and then go to the budget? Or you want to go to the budget now?
Uh, let me do this, the city attorney will be first, let's get that done.
Okay, that's presentation and consideration of options, documents and a discussion regarding sanitation services.
So Mayor and Council, as I was articulating earlier, we are in a position where, um, we need to provide and get on board the third service required. Um, there are six services you can offer, a career, a realistic and practical for the city. And that would be the police, fire and sanitation services. Um, so we need to get this in place so that we can secure our status as a qualified municipality. So my recommend, my recommendation would be, you have two documents before you. You have an emergency ordinance, um, providing procurement policies. And you also have a duplicate copy of this ordinance, but it's just the first read. So my goal is to put the emergency procurement, uh, policy in place today and then have second read, um, so that we can flush it out if there's any amendments that you would like made. What this would do is this would put the procurement control in the hands of the city locally, instead of having to rely on Fulton County's ordinance, which was very convoluted. Um, some standard proportions were outdated. Um, and I think this would help us facilitate the process a lot easier. Um, another thing I would like to do is, if you look at this ordinance, um, there is a section, and I also, um, sent the council this section by email, there is a section here that pertains to, um, procurement following a unsuccessful RFP. And that's the precise of the situation that we're in currently. And if you turn to page thirteen, it's on, page thirteen, it's item forty. It's called direct negotiation following competitive solicitation. So I would like, um, to get this ordinance in place that I can get with staff, which would be the city manager and the procurement manager, and to initiate contact immediately with one of, uh, one at least of the three vendors who were, um, part of that deal RFP process. And to do a contract with one of those vendors immediately. And that contract would require approval by the council, so we would have to come back to you to get your approval for anything that move forward. But we would at least like to obtain those discussions and get this in place using these specifications that were on these RFPs that were recently submitted to the city. We would just pick one vendor and bring that person back to the city. I would also like to, um, say that this, this, this effort is also taken under the, the direct negotiation process, but also on an emergency status. Because your lost funding is, um, I believe I'd have to confirm what finance, but I think it's a second largest source of revenue for the city, um, which if we did not obtain our qualified municipality status, would be devastation financially, um, for the city and its constituents and the delivery of city services. So, um, I'm putting out the record that this is also an emergency effort, but we're going to utilize the direct negotiations so that we include, still include a form of competitive bidding.
Uh, Madam Attorney, let me ask you, uh, are you inclined for the record that the rationale for the emergency procurement is to fight the real, ready to lose lost funds?
Yes, correct.
Any, uh, yeah, okay.
I know I had sent a, a number of questions about, um, this particular ordinance. Does this allow, and I know the emergency pretty much mirrors the one that we would be wanting and putting in place permanently, how does it deal with, and I still don't see it addressed relative to using, like municipal cooperative, per, collective purchasing opportunities like US communities, um, that are available to us, to us, the GMA?
So Councilwoman, you actually have a, a great point. I thought, I thought your conversation was about a very odd point. So what I did is, um, I put in language in here that just clarified that this ordinance, that no recapture will limit or restrict, in fact, the city's ability to use, um, alternative cooperatives available through GMA and other local government entities. So that is in this current version.
Oh, so you, so you, you check, where is that?
Um, yeah.
Hey, GMA, looky, but I have another question. I know the threshold level, levels in here, they seem low to me, given the size of our city. Um, so I, again, wanted some information in terms of these levels. I mean, we're a large city and it just seems like twenty-five hundred is really low for the purchasing manager. I'm fine with the process, just the, the level. So I, I wanted some insight on why we chose these levels.
So I chose these levels because you can currently authorize the city manager's procurement contract up to twenty-five thousand. So I stay consistent with that authorization. But is your discretion to increase that amount? And if the city manager or the purchasing manager probably couldn't tell you why, it should or should not be increased. And while he's coming up, just to answer your, your earlier question, if you look at page fourteen, subsection six, the second paragraph.
What's that? It's, it's twenty-five, I mean, two thousand five hundred and one dollars. And so, again, that speaks to me, when we're talking about those cooperative agreements, I'm, I'm gonna give you an example. If we did a piggyback or we use the, um, the purchasing cooperative, even a piece of playground equipment, I'm just asking. The levels just seem low. I don't know if you address it here, if you figure out with the cooperative agreements, but it's putting you into a RFP. But the whole benefit of that process is so you don't, you make the government run more efficiently. So, again, I'm concerned about the levels relative to what we can really do. It, it looks good on paper, but the practicality of, I have questions about. But I'm just trying to get some clarity.
So, so I think our purchasing manager did have some, I know there was some conversation between he and our attorney about the levels. And I also think, uh, for your legislation, you could also include some language where I think when you use those cooperative agreements, it's already been procured.
Right.
And so you could specifically call out when, you know, acquiring a service through those areas, then you may not have to have a, a limit. Or, or you could identify the limit or product, you know, within your legislation. And so I think there are a variety of ways that you can do it. As far as the levels, I would defer to our attorney and purchasing manager, because I do know they had some conversations over the last week or two.
I'm just looking clearly and, and again, I want a good answer, because I've worked in procurement. So I just want to understand how this is, so that I work out the ratio.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Gunn?
Yes, please. So Madam City Attorney, you just stated about we, the reason for this ordinance as an emergency is because we're going to lose, the loss. Now, I've been hearing two different stories. First, we're not gonna lose it and now we are gonna lose it. So what, can you give some clarification, get around that and why you make that statement?
Well, I, when I say that we are going to lose, well, first of all, to clarify, no one is telling me we're going to lose lost funding. Like, no one has contacted the, me or the city or sent a letter saying, you're going to lose lost funding. However, pursuant to, there is a state statute in place that says that you have to, you have to deliver at least three of six services to qualify for lost funding. Right now, we are delivering two of those services. Now, there is a subsection in that legislation that gives us an exemption during the transition period. So we have through the transition period to get those services in order and then give notice to the appropriate state authority that, look, we're a qualified municipality, continue our qualified municipality status. So that means that if we do not have that status by, um, a certain date, then I can't give that notice to the commissioner, I mean, to the, the state tax department. Now, I would like to give the notice to the state tax department by October first, because they, the state would then have thirty days to let every other jurisdiction in Fulton County know that South Fulton is officially a qualified municipality. And then we can start the process to ensure our entitlement to those lost proceeds. However, if we don't get this in place, I can't send that letter out. And then it doesn't guarantee that we're going to be able to complete that process this fiscal year, which does, in fact, substantially jeopardize your ability of continuing to receive lost funds.
Okay, I just wanted you to clarify that for the residents, because it is kind of scary when you say, oh, well, we're gonna lose lost funding, which is our second largest funding for the city, just to give them that clarification that we're not gonna lose.
Yeah, so we are in, no one has told us we're gonna lose it. We're just, we're doing this to ensure that we don't get that letter.
Okay, and I, I want to yield to Councilwoman Gilliard.
I, I want to make a point about the twenty-five hundred dollars.
Twenty-five hundred?
No, no, no. The first twenty-five, twenty-five hundred. Um, only because I went through it and know how it works. So if you want to purchase something and it is twenty-five thousand, I mean, below twenty-five hundred, you don't have to get three quotes.
Right.
It's about quotes.
Right.
And if it's over, you have to get the quotes. But then when you jump up to, so that the distance between twenty-five hundred and twenty-five thousand is still the three quotes. When you get to the twenty-five thousand, when you get to the twenty-five thousand, that, that's when you have to have, um,
That was not what my question was about.
I know that's not what your question was about, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to bring up that point. And I, and I, I think at the lower level, you know, they're trying to, and, and I can't speak for why the purchasing department and, you know, uh, purchasing area has done it. Other than that, I think we want you to be able to, you know, have some, uh, ability to move with some, um, some restrictions so that you just don't just do whatever you want to do. And so I just wanted to make that point, so.
Ms. Gunn, you still have a question?
Director, sorry, can you speak to-
Yes, the current, the current- Good morning, Council. Uh, the current thresholds are, uh, to avoid the competitive process, that is twenty-five hundred dollars. Then above twenty-five hundred dollars and between twenty-five hundred dollars and twenty-five thousand, it is, uh, Councilwoman Gilliard is correct in that we would require three quotes. Uh, it is, uh, my opinion that we should increase, uh, the city manager's authority to engage in contracts up to fifty thousand. I do believe twenty-five thousand is too low of a threshold. I believe that, uh, hinders our ability to be efficient and, uh, it bottlenecks, uh, procurement that could be moved a lot quicker into RFPs, ITBs, and I think that slows down the process. So would be my recommendation that the limits be increased, uh, to allow for fifty thousand purchase through the city manager.
Well, thank you for that recommendation. Maybe a little bit too early, but thank you.
Okay, well, we have Ms. Willis, Ms. Cleve, Ms. Jackson, or Ms. Gilliard?
I think it's a reasonable expectation that we have our thresholds. Right now, we have, we're in this city and, uh, we are, um, majority of us have talked about these thresholds and, you know, we're trying to do a better job of getting consensus amongst each other. And, um, I think this is a comfortable place where we are at this time. Um, and thank you, Ms. Gilliard, for being specific. Point, the purchasing manager has between two thousand five hundred and twenty-five, up to twenty-five thousand dollars before he's required to get three quotes. And I think that's reasonable. And I looked at other cities and, and, and counties in this region.
What, do you give a opinion?
Yeah, I think-
We're varying off a little bit on, on the issue.
I do too.
You know, so, let's, let's get back, uh, to talking over what we're talking about. And you still have the floor.
How old are we, Darren? Now, we're talking about the Ferguson ordinance and we're talking about thresholds. We're talking about letter J.
Talking about authorization of the emergency procurement.
Right, which includes letter J, which, this is, in order for us to get, this is the ordinance. We're talking about the emergency ordinance. In the emergency ordinance, it is letter J, which includes star show. And a question came up about thresholds. The, the, the purchasing manager just recommended to the council that we increase the city manager's thresholds. What I am saying is that I think that we are comfortable with what thresholds we have in our emergency ordinance, which includes the thresholds. I think we're comfortable, most of us are comfortable at the levels for right now.
You make a, recommend, you make a comment.
I'm making a- And I'm making a response to this recommendation.
Okay, excuse me, okay. So let's get back to where we're supposed to be. Ms. Willis comes to Cleve.
I'm done, I'm here.
I do think that we have two issues here because we have two ordinances. We have an emergency ordinance and we have an ordinance. I think it's clear that we probably need to have a little bit more conversation- I think it's clear that we probably need to have a little bit more conversation as a group and with our attorney and our purchasing manager before we move forward with the ordinance. I actually agree with Dr. Rao in terms of not the emergency ordinance, but the ordinance and not about the quotes for letter J, but about the approval. If I, as a city councilman, am having an event, I'm just saying, if I'm having an event and it's twenty-five hundred and one dollars, you know, I think there, there are some concerns that I have, not just about the approval process, but also about some things that I think are missing around responsible leaders. But what I don't want to do is hold up our sanitation process with a debate about what will happen afterwards. I, I think that, I am, I will just say I am, I don't want to speak for the council. I am okay with this ordinance as an emergency ordinance, but I would ask that we could have more conversation about the ordinance after this emergency is passed.
All right, Ms. Jackson?
Ms. Mayor, Ms. Jackson, as you said, I moved to make the motion that we move forward with the emergency ordinance and the ordinance for the procurement, I say.
Talking move the second discussion, have you made, I, I don't want to change the discussion, I'm sorry. Are, are you motioning to approve both ordinances now?
Yes. Well, what I'm asking, no, you, what, what you just said, and to clarify, is that you want to move forward with the emergency and you want us to leave the regular ordinance. What I'm saying is that we're comfortable with the way that both ordinances read. And I made a motion that we move forward with both ordinances as the first read.
Well, the emergency would be adopted tonight and then the non-emergency would be the first read.
So, we, so, so that isn't.
This morning.
So, in essence, that is invalid motion. We cannot approve the regular ordinance in a first read.
Well, I think what you're saying, let me clarify, are you saying that we adopt the emergency as is today and that we proceed with the second non-emergency as is for first read?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, uh, discussion, Ms. Jackson, I'm gonna call you earlier.
Well, I, I wanted to make a comment on the twenty-five hundred, I've already done that.
Yes, okay, thank you. Ms. Rao, still discussion?
Again, I'm trying to seek clarity and for the benefit of the public when we're doing, how does this work and what section is it addressed so that we as a city can purchase under cooperative agreements?
So, that is, Councilwoman Rao, that is page fourteen. If you look at section six, it's the second paragraph. It says, "Nothing in this ordinance shall impact or scan or limit the city's ability to pursue purchasing cooperatives and alternatives allowable under state law through the Georgia Municipal Association and other organizations."
Thanks. I, I asked her about this previously when I first read it and so, thank you for incorporating.
Thank you. All right, are those the favorites? That passes six to one? Same vote, Mr. Kalie?
Who's the number?
Mr. Kalie?
Ms. Mayor, I move that we approve an emergency ordinance providing procurement policies and for other lawful purposes.
I thought we did a more.
No, what we voted on.
Mr. Clerk, clarify.
There, there's a motion to move forward with both, and that was to adopt the emergency ordinance and for, to move forward for second reading the original ordinance.
Okay. So, how about that?
I'm sorry, I have a different question. Now that we've approved the first read, the second read will be this Tuesday, four days. So, we have four, if we have any, if we have any amendments or questions, we have four days before this comes up for a second read.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Okay. And that takes you to the first item on today's agenda, that's consideration of fiscal year twenty eighteen and fiscal year twenty nineteen budget reallocations as being presented by the city manager. Good morning, Council. Good morning. Today, what we have, there are two items that we've kind of split. One of them is a minor amendment related to the budget for FY eighteen, which I think is fairly timely based on the previous conversation. I think, just quickly, we have already provided, you have it in your add-on package, but also we provided it via email yesterday regarding some expenditures that we needed to clean up, knowing that, and I think we talked about this in our previous meeting, that we'd be bringing this back to you because in October, there is one final adjustment that you make to be in alignment with your audit and make sure you closed out the, the fiscal year appropriately. And so, this is the only, I guess, true-up, that opportunity that we have. Just very quickly, I think there were some adjustments where we had some salary savings that we identified that would be utilized for professional development, conferences and, and small purchases that needed to be made in both the city manager's budget as well as the city clerk's budget. In addition to that, our finance and administration needed to reallocate some funding for the community development services. I think one of those areas that we have to procure, which I think you guys are familiar with, is the planning and zoning contract that you requested on July sixteenth during the budget priorities goal-setting session. It was also in your FY seventeen goals for land use. And so, we're trying to make sure that we close out that procurement. And in doing so, what we have seen is that the twenty thousand that was allocated is not enough. And so, we moved about fifty-five thousand to bring that total to seventy-five thousand. In addition to that, our business inspection contract that we have, I think we have a, what we would call a positive problem, even though we added more funds for it to cover the expenditures, both the revenue and expenditures have increased. And so, we've added seventy-five thousand dollars to that contract to give us a little bit of leeway. As you know, we've had a, a big boom in building inspection, and so, we have to be able to cover both the expenses and be able to accept the revenue. I think finally, when you look at police, there was an adjustment of about four hundred and sixteen thousand in their budget, which would be cut, which would allow us to cover the cost of E nine-one-one services. And then, finally, there was a reduction of the general services cost center of about two hundred thousand to cover a shortfall within the fire department. And so, those are our adjustments that are currently being laid out and presented to council. And so, if you guys would approve this or if you accept these proposed changes, then it would just take an action for you to approve the amendment as presented. Ms. Gilley?
I have a few questions.
Okay.
The first one is the planning and zoning contract, the fifty-five thousand dollars for planning, what contract was that?
That is for the zoning ordinance, for the consultant to develop or coordinate the delivery of the zoning ordinance.
And have we hired a consultant yet?
We have not because we.
But you don't have enough money. Um, what about the business inspection contract? Is that what you chose after?
Yes.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I, I have a practice of not mentioning vendors specifically.
Okay, I, I got it. And I, why, why do we have to pay an additional four hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars for nine-one-one?
The first, our CFO for that adjustment. She's asking about the E one-one, E nine-one-one.
So, the IGA allocation was not enough?
Yeah, why? You know, when we, when we entered into the IGA, they said, "It's gonna cost you X amount of money to enter into this for X amount of services." So, if we're paying four hundred and something thousand dollars more, why are we doing it? What extra do we get for it? Did they under-cost it to us or?
As we go towards the end of the IGA, we are incurring more costs for the services that have remained there because of the overhead.
I actually have a question about that as well. So, are we, I think this is something that, I'll be frank with you, I've had a conversation with Fulton County about this. I know that there were some concerns in transportation around maintenance and I, me and Councilwoman Gums had some of those conversations that I was, kind of left out of the loop on, that the county has had where we did not approve certain costs that they have asked for. And I'll tell you that the position that I am taking, I have not had a conversation with our lawyer about this, but I will later today. We literally talked about this last night. The IGA is supposed to ensure that we have the level of service provided in twenty sixteen. And so, whatever it costs to deliver that service is what it costs. If there is a product that needs to be purchased for them to deliver that service, I am of the opinion that they should pay for that cost and it has nothing to do with us. And so, this particular cost, I apologize, I'm not in the know specifically of whether we're receiving additional services. I do know that E nine-one-one is one of those areas, which I also believe stormwater, where there are some additional things that take us above twenty sixteen levels. That may, that may be the case here. Again, I'll defer to our CFO, but I will tell you, you're gonna get some conversation and some pushback from the county because I am, I have taken the position and will take that position unless you guys tell me otherwise that in the delivery of services, for what we pay and what we agree to in the IGA, they must deliver it. And if that means they broke a bush cutter and they need a new one, they should go in their general fund or wherever else to be able to fund that. And we should stick to the IGA services. And so, I apologize, I'm not in the know on this particular one, but, but while we're talking about it, I just want to make you aware because I've seen some of the emails go back and forth, and I believe that they should pay for that out of their own pockets.
And I also wanted to add that out of IGA, there are two groups that have come out of IGA. One is animal control because we signed a new contract. So, you see that expenses are more than what we're paying in IGA. And the E nine-one-one as well, we signed the direct contact, contract with Fulton County and other cities. So, that's completely different. It's more than what we were paying directly through IGA.
Yeah, so, these are costs we actually, so, to give you a little bit more insight, we actually brought this back. This is the second part of that nine-one-one contract, and we brought it a couple of months back. I think Mr. Malazie is saying while it is the FY nineteen agreement, we start paying for it in FY eighteen, and so, the budget has to be a little bit higher to cover the difference in costs.
And there were some costs there that were being funded by general fund of Fulton County, like radios, those ones, we actually have to cover them up, we have to pay them up. So.
So, so my, 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 um, my final question is, what does it take to have to have a nine-one-one service?
I would say that when it comes to, what I would prefer to say is when it comes to animal control, nine-one-one and other services that we are partnering with other municipalities or government entities for, we are exploring how to do those in-house currently.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Willis?
Um, is there, can you tell us what caused the shortfall for fire department? What was the shortfall? What caused the shortfall for the fire department?
So, we had the, this is our third funding, this is our third amendment. In our first amendment, we knew that this money, we were not going to use it. We moved some money from fire allocated to other departments. In the second amendment, we moved some money. Now, they need some money, so it's just moving. It's what we already moved, we are bringing it back.
You mean that million dollars that we moved for fire here early on? Okay, okay, all right. And the hotel motel tax is highlighted on the budget limit?
It's in and out because we, you have not yet allocated what to do with it, so we receive, but there's no expenses towards it.
Okay. Well, there's specific requirements around it that your budget manager need to research.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Rao?
Couple of things. We actually did pass the ordinance, and so, please look at that hotel motel tax because we just passed that three percent. Secondly, are all the issues with our shared police-fire station, are all the mortgage issues addressed?
Actually, we received some information from our risk manager about two days ago. And so, the assessment says that all of the issues have been met and they've documented where the, the issues are. There are some areas for improvement though, so I, I would, it's probably not the right terminology, but are we at the legal limit or threshold where we can appropriately have people occupying both sides? Yes. Are there some practices and some things that we need to look at to ensure that, you know, we don't have to go back for remediation? Also, yes. And so, we're in that process now.
Okay. I want to know before I do anything with this amended budget that we don't have, so, and the other thing, in terms of, you know what I'm saying about right of way in Camden Road. So, again, I know this amendment, I want to make sure we have some money set aside to do something between now and the seventh of September.
This, this is what.
You may say they're gonna cut it this day and time, so.
No, no, this is what I was saying. We had a brief conversation the other day. And so, we have added funding to be able to receive a higher level of service than we received in twenty sixteen. That was done in the previous amendment. With today being the, the seventh of September, just being completely honest, I do not believe we have the ability to put something in place prior to the end of the fiscal year. But, the purpose of bringing back a new service delivery model for consideration of the council is to ensure that as of October one, we can address those issues in the manner that council desires.
So, my opinion, so, again, we just passed this emergency. I know that cleanup only requires three quotes. That is not take that long, about nine minutes to get a quote to cousin Brandon, but, you know, we usually don't go there, but this request has been since June fourth. Well, I'm, I'm talking about this right now. I just want to make sure it's fine.
So, let's say this, so, across the city, here is my perspective on it. So, through the regular channels, we would not be able to attain a, someone to be able to provide equitable service at a higher level across the city by the third. Not certain if this would also be deemed an emergency or something that we can deem an emergency as well. But, what I would, without question, be open to doing and tasking folks with exploring is whether there is some type of cooperative agreement for additional maintenance-related services. What I don't know is what that cost would be and how we could rectify it now. I think that's, that's what the, the challenge has been, which is why I have deferred to do it during the service model. I mean, do it, do it, do it through October first and adjust our service model as a whole.
Well, I would say I love innovative and creative government. So, any way we can figure out how to get it done over to our party, I don't know, but I, I want that looked at. So, I believe in that.
I'm sure. Well, with another thing that we may be able to do, and I would want our CFO to confirm this, but if, if the county. So, if we have enough funding through another department or call center, like the general services call center, what we can look at doing is going into a cooperative agreement, I believe. what we can look at doing is going into a cooperative agreement, I believe those only take about three days.
But I, I trust y'all-
But this is what I would say, you would have to approve, allow us to enter into an agreement up to a certain amount today because otherwise we gotta come back the two weeks from now and this fiscal year is over. Do you follow what I'm saying? And so I believe that the funding exists in general services already.
I think you need to give us a close measure how much to see what we have. Because if we don't have enough in general services that can be applied, we have to get-
Do we have a hundred thousand dollars in general services that we can apply to something like this? So in that case, if the council were to, especially with us only having a couple of weeks left, if the council were to approve us, to authorize us to enter into an agreement to coordinate this citywide, then that would take care of the remainder of the year and hit some of those areas that y'all are concerned about. And then when we come back for October and we look at the public work service model, you can address it forevermore. If, if that is something that the council as a whole would like to do.
Great, next speaker is Ms. Jackson, brought by the floor.
Uh, we just cleared up what I'm trying to find out, and that is what can we do to make it happen? And let's put some money aside, uh, vote on it today, uh, maybe, so I'm good with that. You have a need to, because I have something.
Ms. Willis?
And so, I would just, I'm-
Hold up, he had a comment, I'm sorry.
And so I don't like making commitments that I can't keep, so, so give me out. Where you guys would be authorized for funding, our staff would know that they have this limit and they would look at a cooperative agreement or some type of maybe multiple small contracts, et cetera, et cetera, to be able to get that done. I just wanna make sure that you know what the process is because today, I don't know if there exists a cooperative, if there's somebody who does this for someone else. I think that's the point is that we doing this blind. So I, I don't, I don't like to do something blind and people not know that there may not be a company that has this agreement to do additional right-of-way maintenance or whatever we're gonna be coordinating, so.
Okay, um, Ms. Willis?
So, if I'm understanding it, the only thing I agree, because I have several areas in my area that hasn't been getting attention either, the welcome hall area specifically, but, um, but my understanding is that you all have to get three quotes between twenty-five hundred and twenty-five thousand, and it-
That is, so, but that's why I also mentioned the cooperative agreement piece. Because again, it may be Joe's right-of-way maintenance that does it for Jonesburg or some other municipality, that means we need to go and just do an improvement. But it may also be that we talk to Fordton County and say, listen, this is what we're requiring and we're gonna increase the cost of this, that, and the other, or do a separate IGA. So what I'm saying is you guys are authorizing us to figure it out, but I'm also noting we got a very short time to figure it out, so, you know, we-
So, so I understand with Fordton County is that they have limited staff as well. So I was just thinking, ought to for us to get this done the way we want it to get done, that you may have to look to get, uh, other, other, um, cooperative agreements or somebody else to come in and, um, and-
Alright, I think we have to look at all of it. I think the point is that we've got what, uh, math and always they great for twenty-three calendar days left in the year to try to be able to coordinate this. So it is our hope to be able to get it done. And we're gonna look at those three methods off the top of my head, but those folks are pretty smart. I think they'll, you know, hear this conversation and start moving on.
My only concern, and I'm, and I'm gonna, um, yield to Ms. Jackson, is that you have twenty-three days and we don't know how much this stuff is gonna cost. So I would just a little, I agree, it needs to be done, but if you only have twenty-three days and we don't know how much it's gonna cost, I, I, I'm just a little uncomfortable with that. And I don't know how much to even allocate.
So, Councilmember, what I said was that the reason we haven't addressed it is because there's only a short amount of time. And so it is my, I don't wanna say my preference, but it would be my normal mode of action to address it long-term from October first forevermore. But the council has been extremely passionate about this. And so you just asked me for a solution that could potentially get it done. I gave you my best option. And if that doesn't work and if we can't get it done, I'll be forthcoming and say, listen, in twenty-three days, we did not have enough time to get this done and we didn't waste taxpayer money. And I'm sure y'all would be happy with that. Or I'll come back and say, you authorized us, we had a quality use of taxpayer money and look at what we got done for the city. Those are, that would be how I would handle it.
Okay, Ms., Ms. Gums?
She said, she said, Ms. Jackson?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson.
Um, my question to you, um, currently public works, could we not put that money in as like an overtime for them? Some type of overtime payment?
So yeah, that would be potentially, but we don't, so they have a limited amount of staff right now. And so that has been one of the challenges as well. We actually, in the last budget amendment, added money to public works to be able to provide overtime. This is also a little bit outside of their jurisdiction, remember? G-DOT is actually the provider of the right-of-way maintenance. And so, I mean, hey, we gonna call G-DOT and say, listen, we've got some additional funding, can we do an internal agreement with you? But again, we've got twenty-three days and so we're gonna talk to any and everybody you can within a short period of time. And that's really the only insight that I can give you today because that's it, we're here today, yes ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Willis, you still have a floor?
Exactly.
Again, I agree it needs to be done, I just don't, I'm uncomfortable without knowing how much we should be allocating.
Alright, now, this, Ms. Gums, Ms. Gilley, and we're gonna end it with, Colleen and myself.
I'm in agreement with, uh, Councilwoman Willis, even though I know that we definitely need this, um, just for the right-of-way maintenance, is this what we're talking about for just a hundred grand? Or can we get trash picked up as well? Uh, I'm not in agreement with county doing the work or G-DOT because a lot of them, when they do cut the right-of-way, it's still a sloppy job and it's not reflective of what the city deserves.
I, I would say, I would say, Councilmember, the twenty-three days left, I am not certain what we can do, I don't wanna lie to you.
So realistically, we probably won't be able to really get this.
We could probably get something done towards the end of the, it would probably be that last week. The way I would see it, you would take next week, figure it out, come up with some type of agreement, have, uh, our attorney review, we turn it around, execute. And then you have that next week for somebody to come out and do that one short-term service. Uh, if, and if the easiest thing would be to partner with some government to do it. That's gonna be the, the easiest way, uh, to get that done. Otherwise, I'm not certain we can get it done, and that's why I've cautioned you guys with that.
So the easiest way is to get it done with the government, so you're saying with G-DOT, but as we know, G-DOT-
And it may not be G-DOT, it may be G-DOT and Fordton County. I do not know that, it may be the parks and recreation and it may not-
Either way, we know that local government doesn't move fast. So what about independent contractors, could we secure?
So that's where you're gonna have to procure it, and so that, that would be a challenge. I'm telling you, it's a challenge even if you do it with local government because I could call the city manager, I would just say East Point and just throw them out. You call the city manager from East Point and he says, oh, you gonna give me twenty-five thousand dollars to add to my budget that's gonna go into my general fund next year? Sure, I wanna do it. And then our legal writes it up and sends it to their legal, that might take a whole nother week. And then afterwards, it takes a week and we're in October before they could deliver the service. So I'm not sure we can get it done. You made a request to me and I told you how I was gonna go about, what it would take to get it done. But for me, the simplest thing would be, hey, authorize the funding. I'm gonna tell you, if I'm, if it's gonna be a waste of taxpayer money and we can't get it done, I would be honest and say, listen, we went through these three to five efforts, we attempted to get it done and we couldn't. Or I'll come back and say, we went through these three to five efforts, got it done and we did it, you know, that's-
So, um, and one other thing, just not just when right, right-of-way maintenance, I want trash delivered as well addressed, um, and I yield to the world.
Is there any way that you can come back with a recommendation and then we vote? Instead of us just voting blindly on some money, we, on something that we don't know how much it costs? Can we just wait to come back within a week with a recommendation?
So listen, Councilman, I'm not asking for this, you, you guys are making a request to me about how, you know, you, you, you feel like I could get it done. I would tell you, based on some of the hesitancy or whatnot and me not being able to give you a finite answer, the best thing that we can do is look at our transportation model for FY nineteen and adjust it in a way that you get the right-of-way maintenance, the regular trash pick, et cetera, et cetera, that you would like, and we address it there. If you want to address something in these twenty-three days, you would have to allocate a certain amount of money and let us figure it out because we do not have an answer today. And if we bring you an answer back in two weeks or whenever that scheduled meeting is, your fiscal year is over anyway. So we, we could be patient and just wait until October one.
So if we add this on with the county contract that we have, that means that we're gonna not just only pay for the service, but we're gonna pay overhead as well, right? That's not, that's number one.
To that, I would just say I just don't know.
We would, because they're gonna add that overhead in there, trust me. Um, if we go to another entity, another municipality or county or whatever, would they, do you think, want to enter into an agreement with where they charge overhead as well?
I, I seriously just do not know. I, I mean, we have not had conversations of this sort with anyone to date during my tenure. So it is just difficult to say. Man, at the end of the year, if someone's coming to me asking for us to provide a service to them, then I would be inclined to get it done because it's gonna add to my coffers for the next fiscal year.
So, so then the last thing is if we, um, if we got three independent contractors to give us a quote, could we do a little T V bit of it somewhere between a dollar and twenty-four thousand nine hundred?
So, so here's why, I, I think we're now getting into the job that the staff is gonna do if authorized. And I, I can't answer those questions because I'm not gonna be the one making the phone calls or figuring it out. I would say our team would look into every available option in hopes of getting a yes and delivering it. And if it does not happen, then no funding would be spent.
I think that's-
Mr. Colleen? I have a team there. Uh, that's okay, I'm, I'm gonna give a man.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to allocate, uh, up to fifty thousand dollars to-
Cross.
Authorize up to fifty thousand dollars to help clear and cut the right-of-way throughout the city and, and-
Let's get this out.
Across the city.
Yeah, second.
Second.
The problem we'll discuss is secondly discussion.
Um, gee, this, this is time to discuss, right?
Yes.
If we're going to increase it to the level where we have to get bids, I think that it needs to be more than fifty thousand, I think, reasons. You know, I don't think that's enough for the whole city. And that can take care of picking up some trash and, and doing a little bit of right-of-way stuff, like almost in every district. So, um, I, I would like to change it to this.
That's me.
Yes.
She give that, yes, okay, let's go.
See, although we are on the town now.
Everything, everything that we are discussing, just know that it's not yet budgeted, it's not inter-budgeted.
That we're talking about twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, yeah, it's not inter-budgeted, so get whatever will be, whatever is remaining in it. Uh, that means the facilities manager, in the facilities manager, in the general services, whatever money was there and wanted to use it, we would allocate to what you are directing now because it was not on the budget, it was not budgeted.
So whatever the amendment we're doing today, you're saying we're gonna take, or do we have to do another budget amendment for a hundred thousand dollars?
No, there is money there that he had some other issues to do with. So he can use that one, give it to you because it was never budgeted, it's not part of the budget.
So we don't know, so what you're, what you're saying is like today, we're asking for money to do a budget amendment and we're asking for money for our planning ordinance that we've been asking for, our building inspection contract, uh, to be allocated. Uh, and so we got, you're saying that we're gonna have to repurpose all of these funds?
That, that's, that's the main demand we have already done, that one is just, so you are adding the amendment, you are adding the fifty to the amendment that we have done, this one is already, already done.
Let, let me ask you a question because, because maybe I was confused, so. There, yeah, there's no agreement here, let me just make sure we're, we're all on the same page. We presented a budget amendment, you guys are asking for some additional service to be provided to the right-of-way. So I, I think, Mr. Malazie, what we're asking, I think we just briefly in our conversation, we identified that there may be funding available in the general fund for this, right?
Without incurring budget amendment, depending on how-
So, correct, I wanna, I just wanna pause everybody and just bring us to the center. So maybe we need to be specific and say, we would be allocating this funding from the general fund. And if we do so, am I correct that it requires no more of, no more of a budget amendment than what we have provided?
It depends on how much they need, because now we have in general services, you asked about, can we get about fifty thousand dollars, about a hundred? We can get that one in general, in general services. However, it will impact some of the things that have already been planned to do between now and end of the, uh, end of the month in general services. So if you're getting to a hundred thousand, we have to go to other departments to get money.
So if that is the case, then I would tell you, Council, what it sounds to me is that, while this is something, and I know that you guys are extremely passionate about it, and we wanna make sure that we handle this, it would be my preference to attempt to address it with our partners at Fordton County under the current IGA, over the next twenty-three days, over the next twenty-three days, and permanently adjust our service model beginning October first so that we can have the transportation department, the transportation services that you would like forevermore. And so I would just ask that since we've been patient enough until now, that we just be patient for twenty-three more days and we adjust the, the service.
I, I agree with that from city manager, because I don't agree with allocating a hundred thousand dollars and we don't know where it's gonna come from. But we have specifically purchased, uh, money today for a budget amendment of eight hundred thousand, over eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, for police, I mean, for fire, for community services. And we, and we have been asking for this consultant to be hired for months. This only ordinance we really have to, procurement is on the street, but we really have to move on to. So I, I agree, we don't need to allocate a hundred thousand dollars and have to go through, uh, proof of other departments of services that we truly need, I, I agree.
Okay, I'm going to allow this, uh, go on, speaking.
Well, I think the city manager, um, actually took everything that I was about to say, uh, just to go back. So can we call for the vote and then? So how do you want me to change what I said?
I would, I would prefer that you simply, uh, you simply withdraw, withdraw that motion and address the budget amendment and then we will circle back under the current circumstances with our partners at Fordton County.
Let's, let's do that, do the maker's motion. Alright, go ahead.
I made a motion and withdrawn a, a motion as Jessica presented relative.
Just withdraw.
Alright, cool. They know that? No, we don't, she said we just can withdraw, he's gonna withdraw that. Okay, she's about to, uh, now, let me tell you- Let me tell you something. I want you all to go through with the real reallocation of money from the city clerk's office. What I wanna know is, what's the purpose? How did we come to that figure? So if you would kind of let me do that. And what is it gonna be, what impact is it gonna have on the clerk's office?
So it's actually for the city managers and the clerk's office. And so what we have seen is that, I'll just be honest, we have to have some stronger and more streamlined travel policies and activities. So we have, and I'll just talk about my department. I would like to send both our CFO and our assistant city manager to the ICMRA training, because it's just vital that they be certified managers. And so it's gonna be similar, that's the same thing for council, that we need to send them to, and I talked about it in our last council meeting as far as the upcoming council budgets, is that, I'll just be honest, as the city manager, I want us to be a world-class city, just as you do. And I think everybody needs to be certified, you need to be able to attend certain activities, and you need to be able to book these hours. And my staff particularly is behind on receiving those certifications. And I would say by default, so is our council. And so because of our lack of having some of the appropriately, the appropriate travel policies, our travel is stream, I mean, it is skyrocketing. A conference that cost three hundred and fifty dollars to register for three months ago now costs seven hundred and fifty dollars. The hotel rooms, if captured at that time, was two hundred dollars, and now they're upwards of seven hundred and fifty dollars. And so the cost of travel has increased quite a bit, but the requirement that my folks get certified and that the council get certified hasn't changed. And so during our strategic planning meeting, it was pointed out to me that we got, what, seven hours, I believe, for that, but then we're still kind of in a draw. And so this is my way of allocating the appropriate funding, so that council and staff get those hours that are necessary. Now, I don't think we will eat up this full amount, but the funding was available, the cost savings were available in the budget. So I allocated to make sure that there are no issues and/or excuses in all of us getting the certifications that we need.
I just wanna, just wanna deal with the issue of transparency. Without saying too much, you know what I'm talking about.
All right, now, I apologize, Mayor, I did not. And I gave a brief memo, because I thought we had discussed it in the previous two meetings. And so I'll kind of accept, you know, any responsibility for not giving enough information, but I did believe that I.
I'm uncomfortable. And I'm uncomfortable, because there's the issue of fiscal management in terms of that which was given to me. All right, and I understand what you said about classes and stuff like that, but that's another subject. All right, I have something to say about that, too. But the fiscal management, second time's done. Now, we're talking about cleanup and trash. Well, that's forty thousand dollars. That's why if anybody's gonna want to commit five thousand dollars to their beloved districts, it's a good time to do it. And I think I'll commit mine to the district. Hold up, hold up, I got the floor. I said everybody speak, let's speak. And it's just my concern, and I don't, you know, when we do these things, like I have a problem when we say we're gonna give somebody five thousand dollars, but I don't see any itemized rationale for five thousand dollars.
Well, and so, Mayor, again, I would point back to, I have mentioned these things prior. And so what happens is, when we allocate this, it is in the operational budget. I think you made a great point. If someone would like to allocate it within their operational budget to a small contract for cleanup, this gives them the ability to do so. I think specifically, and why I dove in into the city manager's budget, because part of the allocation is for my budget and my staff to be able to get the certifications. But putting it in the operational budget, and I know maybe our public doesn't really understand that as much, but the operational budget, you can actually move without amendment. So what this is, is to allow council to be able to do that. I believe we're gonna put it into, I called out that hours would be for travel dues, fees, and conferences. And I can tell you, I love transparency and being forthcoming. It is to ensure that my staff can register the ICMRA. It is also National League of Cities, I think is a big, big one nationally, so it will provide the registration. Although even prior to my coming here, I feel like people should have been able to register for that, but based on some of our internal things, they haven't been able to. And so that is the piece for my staff. For council, I also would say, I think, you know, Mr. Baker had wanted to do some great things in his community, for instance. And so he is probably, I would imagine, and say this for all council members, I just saw him, but looking at you, I can think of about four people who wanted to do some activities that benefit their events and educate them. So putting it operationally would allow them to do that. But I am stressing to council, I believe that you guys should also continue to attend these conferences and take some of these courses, because as a city, for us to be world-class, we have to have those certifications. You have to have the understanding of how you're going to, how to govern. And so I'm not saying that you don't, but I think more education and certifications will help that.
Well, the issue of putting it back into your operating fund, that is no issue for me and Mr. Gilley.
It's been done before by us.
And I'm just saying that I'm just uncomfortable with this blatant figure. You know, that, I don't know how we got there. I don't know how we arrived at, or if there was a line at. And I think if everybody said, I'm taking that five thousand dollars, give it to trash pickup, cutting the grass, I think that's another matter. But I mean, when I look on the paper and I see five thousand dollars. Now, the mayor gave him a fifty-five for the grass, 'cause you put that on the record.
Good, and I may need it to get mine, I get mine up.
So I'm just saying, it just doesn't look good for us to just impact the figure with no rationale. I know that you can communicate that, Mr. Donald.
I'll make sure. I tell you, one of the practices, you bring up a great point, and so this is another adjustment. And I will caution you guys now, listen, the brother been here five months. And so some of these things, it's gonna take a little longer to clean up than it normally would. But one of the things that we'll be doing in FY nineteen, you understood? What we'll be doing in FY nineteen is all amendments will have line item changes and source code. And so that unfortunately was not in the practice when, before I came. And so we cannot make that change within the same fiscal year. But in FY nineteen, that will be an adjustment. And so, listen, I respectfully take it, and we will make the appropriate adjustments moving forward. But I will say for the record, and especially for the public, is that what happens when you have these adjustments and there is a blanket, the council does provide a spending plan, and it is captured before any funding is spent. So it's not a, while the explanation was a blanket to put in operations, the council does have to come back and say where they're putting those.
I just wanna make that, I just wanna make that point. All right?
Yes, sir. So you do not understand. You would have to prove it, I apologize, but I think there was a motion on the floor.
There's a motion.
Yeah, I apologize.
Is there a motion? No, there is not a motion, not on this.
Do we have a motion?
Yes. To approve.
Make a motion to approve.
The amended budget?
Yes, amended.
Say it again. Properly moved, seconded, and furthered discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to agree with the mayor's assertion about transparency. And I challenge all of us to continue to be as transparent about things like that as we are with the scope of everything else that we do throughout the city as well.
Everything.
Sure.
Well, I have kind of OpenGov for so long. So we're gonna talk about expenses across the city. OpenGov, where the taxpayers don't have to come to this meeting, they can just log onto this website and see what's going on. So we're gonna continue to promote about being transparent, let's see what we gotta do, and not knock each other down.
You know, before y'all move over to that, when we talk about transparency, now, and it's no shock to anybody, but I believe I work for more governments than anybody else in this room. And some of them have been recognized as the most transparent governments in the country, maybe the world, including the District of Columbia. And so the things that are taking place, from the mayor's walk to our installation of OpenGov, to our new three-one-one activity that will capture everything, from every tailline call to allowing our residents to take those things into their own hands, are not only better than anything that's happening in the region, I think it's national and groundbreaking. I'd also say again, a lot of these things are new. And so when we talk about, you know, I've heard the council member talk about OpenGov, it's going to be revolutionary for us. But it does take time to put those things and connect them to the website and make it happen. I also want you guys to be patient with yourselves as well. Rome was not built in a day, so surely neither will South Fulton. And so we're all on the same team, we're moving this ball forward, and there are things that are happening that we all know need to be cleaned up. No way that it's gonna cost me double to send Mr. Malazza and Ms. Winfield to ICMRA, right? But you need them to have that now, so that in two years from now, they make the appropriate decisions on behalf of the city. And so it takes time, and some of those bumps in the road are necessary. And so I would hope that you would be patient with me as I help to frame these things out. But even more so, I want you to be patient with yourselves, because as you make a policy decision, it takes us a little bit of time administratively to line up. And so that's just the work of government, and so we need to all be on the same page.
I'm not trying to be, I'm just saying, we've had the discussion the last.
We have, absolutely.
All right, and we find ourselves here again. And that's all I'm trying to say, and that the people in this community need to be transparent to say, if you're gonna give me this, it's supposed to come and done for. And they don't get the time to go to the computer or see all the budget they have. Simply that. So I, we said we're gonna do one of your primary, the service work.
Well, I mean, I want us to be transparent of what's required of us to do our job as policymakers. A lot of people think we were elected and we were, we had to hit the run-up for day one. But in order for us to do our job as policymakers effectively, we have to have the training necessary in order to do the jobs. Number one, we were required to go to training, and we were given three thousand dollars just to do travel and training, and that required one training class. It's three thousand dollars. So while we're being, a lot of demands are being placed upon us by the community, the community has to understand in order for your council people, in order to do jobs, to do their jobs as policymakers, we're gonna have to go to other cities, other states, and we're probably gonna have to get to the, we have to go to other countries to see how things are being done in order to come back and implement and institute things in this city. That's what's going to be required of us, and that stuff is not free. So if you want us to have the best-in-class city, then we're gonna have to ask residents to support us in getting the knowledge to put policies in place to be the best-in-class city. And a lot of these conferences that are coming up, we're just finding out about.
Let's go. All those are fair? Please, a motion by Mayor Proton Baker, seconded by Councilmember Colleen Gilley, to amend the fiscal year 2018 budget as presented by the city manager. That passes unanimously.
With that, I believe the second portion is, the council has asked that the staff review the FY nineteen budget and make some proposed edits and recommendations. I think everybody has agreed that we have a quality, comprehensive budget that we presented prior, but the staff in presenting the budget also presented a host of errors, potential cost savings, and areas that there needed to be some reallocation. And so our CFO and our budget manager have come up with some of those to start the discussion prior to budget approval. Nothing is final. I would like to note that a few council members, including Ms. Gilley and others, have identified some areas where they have questions. All of those have not been addressed in the presentation. We've received them, I think Ms. Gilley already set some time to work with us and go through some of her questions and concerns. And so this is just some of the proposed budgets and edits that our fiscal team has identified. The full staff has not identified them, has not worked on them yet either. The departments have not, this is just the first high-level look based on council's request. I wanted to make sure to highlight that. And so with that, I will defer to our CFO.
Is there a way that we could take a moment and pause the going to executive session when they come back?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for us to go into executive session.
Second.
Regarding?
Personnel, litigation, and real estate.
Absolutely.
I'll be able to second. Any discussion? I'll be able.
Mr. Masti, I'll entertain, was there anything? Actually, I am taking an executive session.
No, sir, no action statement during executive session, so you can entertain a motion to close.
I'll entertain a motion to close the executive session.
I make a motion to close the executive session.
Properly moved, the second, any discussion? Hearing none, that passes. Does that a motion? I know, suspend.
Oh, can we suspend the rest of the?
You just tabled the fiscal year 2019. I have discussion.
Where there's a motion, is there a second?
For discussion, second for discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Donald, what type of impact will it, will there be if we table the discussion for fiscal year nineteen?
So I think right now we are on track. I think right now we were on track to pass the budget on the eleventh. I think the CFO has said that he may prefer to actually coordinate that approval on the eighteenth. Is that correct, Mr. Malazza?
If you don't, if they don't approve on Tuesday, then it will be on the eighteenth. But the procedure was today to go through the changes that have been made so far. Then Monday is the public hearing, regardless of what, there's a scheduled public hearing on Tuesday, the eleventh.
Well, Mr. City Manager, is there any way we can go through this as just dealing with the changes, like now, the stuff we've already?
Actually, I want the changes, unless you want to get into detail, there are about five, six slides of the changes.
Okay.
Then if you have some slides that can be added, on Tuesday, there will be a public hearing. That public hearing is scheduled. So on Tuesday, there will be a public hearing. Or you may adopt on Tuesday, or you may defer the adoption to the eighteenth. But public hearing will have to go through on Tuesday, because it's scheduled.
Right.
The public hearing, how long will this take, do you think?
The public hearing?
No, to go through these changes.
It depends on what contribution it will be, it's about five slides, the change, about five slides. The rest of the information are only memo that I think you may have added, and you have been doing in the handout. Those five slides are the one that are on the handout that you have. So you can go through them, you can see them now, or that will be now.
Right, I don't think we'll take that time, but we do that motion on the floor.
Yeah, go ahead, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, so the second is withdrawn. So that fills for the lack of a second, so we're gonna move forward, Mr. Glurk. Okay.
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, you have a presentation on the agenda that continues in letter A. We covered everything else earlier, besides the fiscal year 2019 budget reallocation. we covered everything else earlier, besides the fiscal year twenty nineteen budget reallocation.
So twenty nineteen budget overview, we have made changes to three revenue line items due to corrections that we have done so far up to end of August. So those are the three additions that we have made. And the franchise fees, there's an addition of about two hundred thousand dollars. And we have business and occupational tax again due to, uh, what we have received so far. There's another additional two hundred thousand that we have projected we will have with twenty nineteen. Then we'll have alcohol beverage, uh, tax, again, another two hundred and ten thousand dollars. That brings us to a new total of twenty nineteen general fund budget to seventy-one million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, four thirty-six. Then these are the expenditures for all the funds. We have general fund, which is the seventy-one billion, one seventy-four, four thirty-six. Then we have all the American fund, uh, there is no revenue into that. Then we have E nine-one-one, there is no revenue into that, because all these ones are funded by general fund. We have restricted grant fund, that's four hundred and ninety-six, six twenty-eight. Then we have hotel motel fund, that we're projecting for the full fiscal year twenty eighteen, uh, nineteen, of hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This plus is a seventeen million dollars, seventeen point five million. Capital projects, there is no funding of capital projects because money will be transferred from general fund. Then we have solid waste fund, that we approximately, we're expecting it to be at nine million dollars. Total revenues is ninety-eight million, four forty-three, three eighty-six. Then we have expenditures, a general fund, expect, sorry. General fund expenditure is fifty-three point four billion dollars. Then we have all Americans, now this is the expenditure side, ten million dollars that has been projected for next year. Uh, E nine-one-one fund, uh, one point seven billion dollars. It will be transferred from general fund. Then we have restricted, uh, grant fund, four hundred and ninety-six, six twenty. Hotel motel, zero, because there is no reallocation yet. We don't know what the money will be, will be used for. This plus is seventeen point five. Capital projects have been allocated for two point eight billion dollars. Solid waste is still the same, it's in and out, nine million dollars revenue, nine million dollars expenditure. Uh, the debt services, we see twelve point three million dollars, for a total of ninety-seven million dollars, ninety-seven point four. This is a summary of, uh, staff in different departments. You have the mayor's office, there are two, there will be two next fiscal year. City council, fourteen, and there will be fourteen. This fourteen is the council member seven plus seven eight. And we have city clerk, three, there will be three. Municipal court, six, they are asking for five, there will be eleven. City manager's office, there are four, adding another four to eight. Uh, community, community and regulatory affairs, two, they will add one to three. Then you have community regulatory affairs of forty, they are going to thirty because of the, um, readjustments of services from different departments centerizing them. Then we have destination staff, four to forty, uh, that's forty to thirty. Uh, we have contracted and procurement, one was adding two to three. Finance, seven, adding two to nine. Fire, one seventy-three, one sixty-five, because of deployment of eight employees. General services, one thirty-four. They will get some employees from parks and other departments. Uh, you have information technology, two, they are adding one to three. Parks and recreation, seventy-three, two fifty-one. They are losing twenty-two, or they are losing twenty-two to go to HR and general services. Police, one sixty-one, one fifty-four, uh, reduction of seven oppositions. The public works, as of now, we don't have, but we're expecting to have fifty-three after transition, making it another fifty-three. So it's a total of four ninety-three to five sixty-one, with an addition of sixty, a change of sixty-eight. Other capital projects, these are, these are proposed capital projects. You have fire, uh, hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's to do with the duties. Then police, you have eighteen, parks, two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Then we're adding software capital projects. Municipal court, nineteen thousand, eight, IT, fifteen thousand. Finance, I don't mean, two hundred and eighty thousand. This management, four thousand. Fire, sixteen, police, fifty-seven thousand dollars. Computer hardware needs, IT, seventy, uh, seventy-five hundred. And police, we need computers for thirty thousand. Yes, ma'am?
So this is going back to, so where is the capital expend, um, the budget proposal for any of the fire stations?
It's the first one in.
So, that's what, okay, that's what we're saying, hundred and eighty thousand dollars to, that just seems pretty much.
So you can make adjustments to this. I think what Mr. Malazi is saying is that this is the priority capital projects that are kinda like, we almost have to have, but there are two point eight million total, so you can readjust. But I think he's, am I correct?
There's one more stage. Then you have to do with vehicles, uh, fire, uh, you have community government, they are asking for two or four police vehicles. Then you have fire, seventy thousand allocated, police, twenty and fifty, uh, twenty and twenty-five thousand. Parks, ninety thousand, courts, thirty-five thousand. Public works, uh, two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Then you have roadways, sideways, public works, five hundred and sixty, public works, city coverage, eighty thousand, facilities and parks, a hundred and seventy thousand. Then you have at the bottom there, I think you see, these are new projects, not, uh, not budgeted. So we have just put money aside. When these projects have been defined, that's when we are okay. So we have lighting citywide, because there's that need, we have put hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And there's infrastructure, just this one is in general, uh, hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So, Mr. Malazi, I just point, councilmember Willis, your question, so you got a hundred and fifty thousand already allocated to fire, that infrastructure budget could also be used for fire as well, or parks or whatever. It's just an infrastructure.
We were like policy cameras, our camera system.
So now the pilot of the camera system is already in there. It is, I think it's about thirty thousand dollars, and, uh, we're talking about the security cameras for homes, the security cameras.
We're talking illegal dumping, uh, or, they can use it for various reasons.
Run out of public facility.
Public facilities, illegal dump-ins, hotspots, uh, if, uh, police needs to tie into the system for public safety reasons, we just, our residents wanna see some type of surveillance.
So, the program that we have is undefined, but I believe the, it is for security cameras. And so, we priced it, uh, and based on what other cities have done, just as a pilot, I think it would get us about a hundred to a hundred and fifty cameras, uh, installed. And so, we have said it was a residential pilot, but I, I mean, you could direct us and give us insights on how you wanted to do it, but those funds are already in the budget. I think we have it under community and regulatory affairs, just to let you know that.
Mr. Donald?
Well, thank you for the lighting study, citywide. I think that is so important. We talked about economic development, they have to see where they're at, for one. But, uh, one of the things, um, I don't see a budgeting, um, payment for our boards. We have code enforcement, board zoning appeals, historic preservation, all of these boards, we need to compensate, or, yeah, some kind of stipend, is that in here?
It is now.
Yeah, we need to add that, thank you. And then my second question is, um, with public works, and I know you're gonna be rolling out the model in the future, please make sure we have adequate, uh, crews to keep our right of ways clean. I just can't emphasize enough.
You do, thank you. Councilor Jack?
Yes.
Are you? And you're saying retro, because somebody just asked me yesterday about the boards.
I don't, I don't, I don't know if they can do it because we be in a new year, but, you know, um, several people on several boards asked me about it, and I said I would raise the question, and I said we would try to do something going forward. I think if they knew we had it at ten, it's the right thing to do.
And that's fine, because somebody just called me yesterday and asked me about it.
Yeah, I've been getting lobbied about it.
So now, this one is even for me. So I'm not, I'm not familiar, and I, I don't wanna belabor the conversation now, but I just don't know about it.
But that's fine, we don't have to go back.
No, just, they said like code enforcement, they said they did their research, it was like thirty-five dollars or something.
I think, I think if, if they come back, because that was under, uh, Hood County, and it might be outdated, as we found in other areas. But if we can look at what's appropriate compensation in terms of some kind of stipend for the people we appoint to the boards, I think that would be appropriate.
Right, we, we discussed that, uh, as the city manager, before you came, uh, but we never put it in place, but we did have it projected for this budget year to do something like that.
We did, but it never happened.
Right, it never happened, councilman.
Yeah, I, I don't think we should go back retroactive, but I do think as of fiscal nineteen going forward, we should do it, and, um, the county, what happened was, when these boards were established, we kinda mimic what the process of the county had in place, and other than county, they were getting stipends for these boards. Um, I think the planning, the zoning commission, now he was on that board, so she could tell you what she was getting paid, but it was a certain amount every time they met. And then for, uh, the, the code enforcement, I think they were getting a stipend for every time they met, and also the, uh, appeal for zoning board, those are the three boards I know were back that was getting a stipend for when they met. Now the other boards, I mean, we would have to make, they didn't exist, and we would have to make a decision on what boards we wanted to give a stipend, but at least those three boards, I think that we need to as of fiscal nineteen going forward, give them some type of stipend.
Let, let me be clear when I'm saying that I think all boards, uh, so that we're equitable across the board. We need to do that. For every board, there'll be a point, that if somebody's appointed and they're serving, that they get something.
Okay, good, good. Mr. Malazi, were you finished with your, entire?
No, it's not.
Okay, yeah, so you're allowed to finish.
So the next one will be cost savings, and I just meant, these are the adjustments that we have done so far, the major adjustments from the time we met up to this time. So we have the beginning fund balance, this is the place that I want you to pay attention to, on fund balance. Our fund balance that we had at the time we presented was nine hundred and five thousand dollars. And we have made adjustments to accommodate the mayor and the council for three hundred and eighty-seven. E nine-one-one, two hundred thousand. Destinations, uh, South Fulton, two ninety-seven thousand. Then we have some reductions on public works. Uh, then we have general administration, ten thousand. Municipal court, uh, eight to one hundred, and there was a duplication for software in there. Information technology, ninety-seven, we have reduced it. Then there's addition of six hundred and ten thousand dollars in revenues, those that you saw at the beginning of the presentation. That one, uh, adding proposed fund balance takes us to eight hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred and nine thousand dollars. This is not any reduction of that bucket that you saw, the three hundred thousand. That three hundred thousand bucket that we have put for infrastructure and the, uh, citywide lighting will reduce this one to five hundred thousand. So, that means we'll have fund balance of five hundred thousand for a budget of seventy-one million dollars. So here's what I did, I said eight hundred and, uh, eight hundred divided by seventy-one. We are having fund balance of one percent. At the same time, our expenditure, uh, the, um, of our expenditure, our fund balance ordinance requires us to have at least sixteen percent. We know we cannot have sixteen percent at the first two, three years, but it should be somewhere else, at least a minimum of five percent. Then we know that we may be fiscal responsible, but as of now, it's one percent, and it's not acceptable having fund balance of one percent. So what we will be doing between now, if you have any changes here, we'll be going back to departments to make some reductions, so that that eight hundred can go up at least, up to maybe one twenty-five at least, as a fund balance. But as of now, fund balance is one percent, which is the, almost we don't have any fund balance. So far, in general, this is the end of the presentation. The rest of it is the, what you may already have, you can go through if you have questions. Uh, remember that the budget is still yours between now and the time it will be adopted. You can make all the changes. You can suggest where to move money, or where to remove it, or delay some of the funding so that we can still get money in the, uh, fund balance, and then you can get back it during the budget amendment, be at the first, at the end of the first quarter. But so far, that's where we are.
Okay, we got councilman Colleen, councilwoman McGilley.
And the city manager, the budget manager can always chip in, uh, for any question or any comment.
So I have to take a step back, um, to a conversation that was happening earlier. Do we have a meeting on September the eighteenth?
Then, if you decide, as of now, there's no scheduled meeting on September eighteenth. On September eleventh, next week, we'll have a public hearing. I, assuming that you are willing to allow all these changes, we're going to make it. So once we make these changes, if you have some, but we would love to have them, a good time so that we can make these changes ready for you by Tuesday. So Tuesday, we are going to have a public hearing, then you adopt this one. If you say, no, we can't have public hearing, or there's a lot of some changes to come, then we'll move it to eighteen. I would recommend not to go beyond the eighteen.
So if we move it to the eighteen, we will have a meeting on September the eleven and September the eighteen?
Correct, September eleventh, it will not fail because there's public hearing.
But, I just, um, as we're, as we're making changes and, and, and considering deferments, I just want to remind our, our councilpeople, we just got a very, um, lengthy, uh, list of ordinances that we need to decide. Um, the September twenty-fifth meeting may already be questioned, so every time, everything we defer, we're just actually creating the meeting, uh, between now and the transition date, which is twenty-three business days away. Um, I, I haven't seen the mayor and council's budget, I'm, I'm assuming we'll get that on September eleven.
Yes, and it's included, yes, yes, okay, yes, yes.
Okay, we have councilwoman McGilley then. Councilwoman.
I just wanted to say that, um, the best of the, uh, items after revenue, it really, um, means that we need to go and look at each page. We need to look at the budget for each page, and to see what those changes are, um, instead of just going through the changes without having, you know, that kinda information, to see what it relates to. So I think that that, um, that is important. I do think that, um, that budget book is very thick, and so, I am begging everyone to go through that book. And really, you know, um, look at the things, whatever you think needs to be added or deleted or whatever. I think that the eleventh might be a little bit too quick to say, yes, let's just go on and pass it, and we might need the eighteenth. So if we do need the eighteenth, uh, to pass the budget, which means that we will have gone through thoroughly, um, it might not, you know, take that much time, but we might wanna use the additional time to have the meeting that we probably won't be able to have on the twenty-sixth, since we're going out of town. So I, I, I don't know if that's too much too early, or whether or not we might need to have that meeting on the twenty-fifth, or whatever, but we don't need to rush through this, uh, this, how much now? What is this ninety-seven million dollar budget?
Well, so, so council, so councilmember, I, I think that's very valid. I would say it would be very tough to move a twenty-sixth meeting up to the eighteen, because remember, staff has to have time to put all of those items in advance of the meeting to get you there. I would say, I think we've received some notes, um, from council and some direction. I would say, I think we've received some notes, um, from council and some direction related to the capital budget. Mr. Malazie, would you mind going back to the capital budget, please, specifically? So I, I think when you look at the capital budget right now, there's about two point eight million dollars in the capital budget. And I think you guys have been very clear about, and these are just priority items kind of summarized, but I think you've been very clear that you want a little bit more attention paid to the, uh, the fire stations. I think you're kind of satisfied with parks, it's a heavy piece on parks there. I think we need, um, you've also talked about a, a few other things related to like lighting citywide. So I think what, what would be helpful for us to do is in these various areas that you've highlighted, i- if you're fine with this, since you have communicated them, we continue to take a look at the budget and make sure we get us a recommendation that's closer to that, uh, five percent requirement that Mr. Malazie talked about and have that prepared on or before September eleven.
Council, Councilman Cle.
I have another, um, follow-up question. The, the public works employee, they have fifty-three employees. Um, you don't have to answer now, but I'm not sure that it's our intention to bring all fifty-three of those people over. But whether we do or we don't, it sounds like we as a council want even more staff than that for the, or we want more work done than what these fifty-three people are currently doing. So I want to make sure that we include that. Um, and the, if we're going to, we're, as we contemplate staff, uh, as we contemplate compensating all of our boards, we must also keep in mind that we have not finished creating boards. And so we probably need to put some buffer in the budget for additional boards that will be coming up between that.
So most of the terms for the boards is the department that you have, like, uh, they mentioned about zoning boards. So just have to remind our zoning, our community department, department to make sure that they have enough. So those departments, that's where those the boards allocations will be.
We do, yeah, that, uh, yeah, council boards.
My last few is based, I know, uh, one of the things he talked about is we don't have a heavy cushion in terms of our fund balance. But, um, I'm going to encourage to go real hard on grants. We leave a lot of money on the table. I think we're well positioned as a new city to go after them, so please don't forget that. But one thing, I'm also being on making sure that our employees have inviting work spaces. So please put some money in our fire stations and our parks and really any building that we are servicing, kids, they need to have computers. These are just, that's basic, so please.
So I just want to make sure, and we got folks taking notes and, you know, we want to make sure we capture all of your requests and come back to those. So more funds towards fire, um, additional funding towards, uh, inviting work spaces and for grants. Would it be fair to say we've got a grant administrator, but you also want to look at grant writers as well?
Grant writer, so I guess all they can focus on going to get the money.
And we also had it under, uh, uh, community, uh, and regulatory affairs. You, you expressed wanting to pull that out and make it a more, uh, centralized space. That's the will of the council, correct? Like after that, we had, we had moved it under there and I proposed to put the grant administrator under the community and regulatory affairs group. What you guys liked is where it was before. And, and make it, got it, okay.
Again, that was definitely demonstration. I know particularly with all the beautiful, uh, many precincts that you, uh, brought on, like we definitely don't want our fire, uh, men and car congress that feel slighted in any way. That is probably, I think, for the entire council.
Um, Mr. Uh, city manager, also the Parks and Recreation was recreational, where it seems they're playing car games, the furniture and all of that is real. That needs to be replaced. Every time I walk in the recreation center and see them, the first thing they say is, and I sent you pictures of some of the furniture. So, um, and I also would like to see us order some movie screen, um, in Parks and Rec, because all of us will start the, um, and the tents. Yeah, well, um, all of us will start to do movie on the green, um, and as far as, for us to, um, you know, rent it's like seven hundred, eight hundred dollars. Every time we do this, we buy one for the seat.
No, no, no pushback there, I think. So we're just to note, to make sure council understands how the process works. So we're noting and documenting your, your question when I'll make adjustments. We have to make some cuts. I can, I can just tell you off, off the top of my head, what I'm probably going to look at is streamlining and adjusting our capital budget to where these, the capital related things that you have made priorities, we would plug those in and try to address them on the front end of F Y nineteen. And then those items that are multi-year, where they may not need to be addressed in nineteen, we would do that five-year project, maybe start some of them in twenty. Don't know if that's what we're going to do, but we would look at that first so that we can reduce our nineteen capital expense to address those operating concerns. You, you follow what I'm saying there? So that's one way we would find money. Anywhere that there are, any position that would probably be questionable, we would also look at those first as well. So if there's a, if we were asking for, to, wouldn't be like police and fire or something, but let's say we were looking for ten people under one of our departments and may drop down to eight depending on what it is. So just want to look at that. And of course with public works, I think we've been kind of forthcoming that the model that they have, and I think Fulton County has said that, is pretty expensive. And we would look at the contractual part a little closer. And so those are the areas, just off the top of my head, I could see where there would be adjustments at, i- is in those areas.
And fringe benefits too.
Correct, they will be adjusted and that, absolutely, by touch, you're right. By hitting those areas, you actually hit more than one, yes ma'am, you're right, yes ma'am.
So, and, and lastly, um, so we are asking that we cancel, um, the council meeting on the, is it the twenty-sixth?
The twenty-sixth.
Cause the twenty-sixth on my calendar is showing, um, Wednesday.
It's twenty-fifth, it's the twenty-two.
Cancel the meeting on the.
Our meeting's on Tuesdays.
Right, our training is on the twenty-sixth. But we're asking, so would it be a problem for us to reschedule the meeting for the twenty-fourth, which is their Monday? Would that give you time and staff time to, uh, be able to, uh, do what you need to do as far as budget? As you said, if we do it earlier, that will put staff in a bad position. So instead of us having that meeting on the twenty, on the twenty-fifth, if we do it on the twenty-fourth, would that be, uh, amenable to you?
I think that's only one thing.
Actually, the, the problem is the more you go closer to where there's something, the budget has to be up.
She's not talking about the budget, she's just talking, they went to something totally different. They're just saying the, the final meeting at the end, they were planning to, at the latest, approve the, the fiscal part, the budget on the eighteenth, if necessary. But the twenty-fifth is just a regular scheduled meeting that you're saying, let's just move it up a day for other reasons. And I believe that that is fine, the only nuance is that that's normally the zoning, uh, hearing. And so I believe that we can, uh, that we could coordinate that, but I think they have to notify folks and our, uh, director is not here yet. And so I believe there's enough time, if we do it now, and what you guys could do is, um, is move forward pending the zoning piece. And then that way you don't have to take a poll, um, and, and if, if that matches up, then we should be good. And did I hit that right, Mr. Massie?
So, yeah, we, I want to make, um, Councilwoman Rowell is wanting to check with everybody to see if we, would it be okay if we make that a day meeting on twenty-fourth? Because she has a time how. I thought I'd all be careful we did. And so we could kind of make, what time is your time home? So we.
It's okay, but.
I, I think, I think you would have to make that at the next meeting anyway, because it's not on the agenda. So I think that we have enough time to where if that is what you want to do, we can find out about the zoning hearing and, um, we can coordinate through the, through the polls if that's.
I just wanted to make my point, I had that on.
We have council, Councilwoman Jackson and Councilman Cle.
Um, I had already asked, um, Mr. Phillips about furniture for the, um, for that park. And that supposedly is already in our budget. Uh, can I also include, I heard him say the laptops for our facility, we have none for our young people.
Got it. And so, Mr. Malazie, am I correct that we got, and probably you have obtained it, whoever kind of capturing the request from council about the la, the ones that they're making now? So we'll make sure to, to note that. I do know that there was some funding put in the budget and remember, some of it you won't see in capital. You'll see it on the operations side, based on the cost of the product and things of that nature. So I believe that there was, I don't know about the laptops, but I'm certain that furniture.
I know the laptops weren't, but I had asked for specific furnishings, I went and found it.
Okay.
And I wanted specific furnishings for one room, so I need to make sure.
So that part, that part I, I am not aware of. I know we have to procure some of those items, so we will make sure that we acquire. We'll make sure that we, uh, obtain the appropriate items through that process. Um, and so I, again, I think we are capturing the both of those responses. We also made, um, some significant adjustments to, uh, the, uh, mayor, council, clerk, uh, and other budgets that are also included, uh, in this presentation. I think another area that you want to look at, can we go back a little bit, Mr. Malazie? When you look, this is perfect, this is the one. When you look at some of the, I know we went over it, but I just wanted to highlight because we, we just want to touch that. In most of these areas, like even when you look at the city manager's office, you see that the positions, uh, doubled, but they truly didn't. We just centralized it in the way that you guys add. So you got under the performance group that sits under me, you've got that M I S and performance manager, G I S, so those existed. And so those aren't new.
Get money.
So I just wanted to highlight that a lot of these positions, the same way where you saw the destination South Fulton piece, it looks like they jumped. They didn't, those are not new positions. And so same way with, um, Parks and Recreation, it's like, wow, they made, we couldn't Park and Rec people? No, I just want to keep reminding you, those folks went to, um, absolutely. I, I know you know it, I just wanted to make sure we touched on it and highlighted it again. And it is spelled out in the budget book, um, but this is just our snapshot of that. That's all.
And if you have any corrections, you have any deductions that you want to suggest, don't wait for Tuesday.
I think, uh, we're not clear, I know I want to come in, but I don't know, Councilman Cle, you was finished, I have a different time.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, there was a conversation with many of us about chaplain position. Can you speak to that, uh, possibly being?
Yeah, and so that's, that's one area that, that adjustment has not been made. Just, you know, we have a very strong chaplain, currently is funded through the police department. Um, that is one area, I know that, um, and, and talked to many people in different capacities about it, including our current chaplain. And so, uh, his experience, it was under the county manager's office, uh, previously. Um, in other places, it's been, uh, under community development or whatnot. I think that, uh, where we would be proposing when we bring it back to you, funding is the same, nothing changes, but we would just move that single position, since it does do so much citywide, under the city manager's office. Unless the council sees a better place for it. Yes, yes ma'am.
You said under city manager, so we can have a chance.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's fine, the whole city, yeah, that's good.
Until we have deductions, we will not have a balanced budget. With things that are coming, so we need to have deductions. We need to reduce departmental budgets in order to have it balanced. Before even we talk about the fund balance, because almost that five hundred I was talking, is almost disappearing now, we're going to get some of these things. So as you think, think about it, where can we reduce, where can we hold on some services? To say, yes, here, but we don't have money, can we work into this? That's what we need to be doing in order to have, to present to you a balanced budget on Tuesday or on the eighteenth.
And I think just for public, uh, awareness.
Excuse me, can, do you mind? I didn't understand what you said.
I'm actually clear, I was going to clarify.
Thank you.
But for public awareness and clarity, I think what Mr. Malazie is saying is that traditionally what has happened is that, I'm assuming you guys wrote down all of your changes and transitioned them over. I think today, and in our one-on-one meetings or small group meetings or whatever you want to call it, you guys have expressed some changes that you would like to see, including those that you've done today. I think what I'm proposing, but also Mr. Malazie is asking for a little bit more, is that we're going to take all of these changes that you've asked for today, but they're kind of additional costs. And so in these one-on-one or two council member at a time meetings that we're setting up, including the ones that we highlighted with Ms. Gilleyard, are coming up and being scheduled, we're going to take your request and do reductions to certain areas in the budget. Similar to what I mentioned before, let's, let's use destination South Fulton, although it's not a great example. It may be twelve positions, but there may be two of those that we need to look at and say, well, can we wait until next year to do that? And that would be a cost reduction of, let's say, a hundred thousand. And then we would look at, let's say, the capital budget, and while we have a three million dollar budget this year, I think it goes up to five the next year and sixty year after that. Well, we may have to defer a little bit more into those other years, pull some money from capital and put it in operating. And so based on your additions and the future reductions that you suggest, it will get us a balanced budget.
Councilman Wood.
Um, so speaking of destinations South Fulton, for the incubator, is there any way, since we're getting private partners to, uh, partner with that, is there any way we can reduce it from a hundred K to fifty K? Since we have major companies coming in and, and willing to partner like Coke, I mean, I don't know what they told you their financial contribution will be, but I'm pretty sure we can get, um, companies to basically support majority of the program. So can we look at reducing that allocation a little?
So I think that you could. My recommendation would be to advise us to look at that one and to take it down to no less than fifty thousand. But if you could secure it at that, so we've gotten some commitments, I think we should do some public stuff about that very soon. But there are costs, so we don't have the capacity to actually administer the program, uh, currently. So we would have to, you know, there's a cost to that. But again, I, I don't, I think that's a fair ask and request. I would just say before you hardline a number, I would ask that you allow us to look at the whole budget to make recommendations on your request.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Um, and I guess I heard you say incubator, because we were discussing this on yesterday and I don't know where it's, uh, going to be. However, uh, as I stated during my ride on yesterday, that is not something that, that's been done on Old National before in Harrison Square. And I don't see where it was successful. Uh, not saying it will not be in the future, but right now on Old National, we need some improvements.
Okay.
Uh, in our current businesses, the facade, uh, and what have you. So I guess what I'm looking at is can, and I did ask your, um, Mr., I don't know his name.
Pike, Mr. Pike.
If we could invest in a grant piece, uh, as well, yeah, facade improvement. Because we don't even have a master plan for Old National yet. So, uh, I guess what I'm saying is before we look at doing an incubator program, can we improve what we have right now?
So I, I think we could probably do both. And, and the way I would look at that is we have put business grants of about twenty-five thousand in there for business for that type of activity. What might be easier to do is, and, and what I would ask for, one, I would say with economic development, I'm going to be successful and we're going to be successful, because that's what I do. That, that's a guarantee, I, I don't push back on much, but that one, that's what I do. The, the second part of that though, is if we made it a hundred and twenty-five thousand and combined them, then we don't have to decide, because we don't know the cost of the incubator or the need citywide for businesses. It's always best to have some flexibility to be, because when we've seen on these mayor's walks, is people have said they want to be able to do the type of improvements that you're talking about. I think the grants would be able to do that, but truly, the incubators we're developing it, it does that as well. So for, a part of incubation is business growth. So for a part of incubation is business growth.
I hear that, but what I'm saying is, be, before you begin to try to grow another business...
No, it's for existence.
Let's try to improve what we have.
That's why the...
Because right now, they have nothing. When I saw the incubator that was on Old National in, in Harrison Square, I go way back.
But this is not what that is, ma'am. It, it's not. This is, this is not, I wasn't there for Harrison Square. This concept was not Harrison Square. So the definition of incubator is basically, is really, we're able to define it as a team, as a group. And so it is basically allocating the funding to be able to grow new and existing businesses. And that's why we have the business and reti, the business retention and attraction. It's retention first. It's for existing businesses to make sure they have the items that they need. The funding that has been specifically allotted is for existing businesses. So I, I actually think we're saying the same thing.
So we can concentrate on the existing businesses first. No, we have none.
Well, so, so I think, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't think that's something that we decide now. We don't have to decide it now. We're allocating the funding to be able to support business as is needed across the city. And so for Old National, the focus could be existing businesses. For, and this is probably a horrible example because Cascade does have businesses, but let's say Cascade didn't. O- o- okay, well, District Four, I apologize. So for District Four that has none, the focus could be for growing, uh, new business. That, that's what I'm saying.
I think we're clear on, like, we're not going to determine where the funds are going to be allocated today, but just the amount. We're going to take, uh, Councilwoman Gilley and have Councilman Clea and Councilman...
I'm good, I'm set.
Okay, well, Councilman Clea, we're going to close off with Councilwoman Moore.
So, um... So it was three o'clock on Friday. I'm sorry, Mr. Massey, I know you still have got to put together our agenda packet for Tuesday. Um, I really hope that, I, it probably can't happen in the agenda packet, but I just want to urge that on Tuesday, that we have a complete budget document with all of the updated numbers, including the, and I, I already see people lagging their heads up. That's not possible. We just need to talk about that because I, I am expecting on Tuesday to see a complete budget with all the numbers by department, including all of the positions that we talked about today, both in this state's and in other places. All of these positions that we talked about creating or changing or upgrading or splitting, um, that we have all of those numbers in a document.
So, Mr. Malazi, how, how realistic is it that we will be able to deliver that? I, I think, I want to kind of temper some of these expectations as well. So the council has provided us some guidance today, right? And so we've got that and we're going to incorporate it. We've also received some guidance in, you know, our small group budget meetings. Got that. But there are additional things that are coming. And so there have to be cuts made. And it is three o'clock on Friday and we do have staff that are being over the weekend and we'll be working on this on Monday. But I want to be clear on what that expectation is and whether we can deliver it because that's a, I am not certain that that can happen by Tuesday.
Because I just, I would just say, I think there was some frustration at our last meeting that the numbers that we have weren't complete. So I, I don't know if it's helpful...
I think certain ones that caused that frustration have clearly been included in there. Those are them. I think the nuanced numbers in areas that we're concerned about that are focused on capital improvements and some of the other projects, that we have to incorporate. But I think there were some specific budget areas that there were some concerns about and those have been corrected for sure.
I would recommend if it's possible, we continue with the public hearing on Tues, on Tuesday and get some insights that you may have and move the final adoption of the budget on the eighteenth so that there is ample time to accommodate all the changes that we may have. To say that everything will be done by Monday and Tuesday, everything will be ready to be, with that being stressed.
Um, I saw it on the other budget. Do we, I didn't see it because I know it's a lot of generalization with this. Do I have this?
Oh, it's in there. So I'm, I apologize, that's in the, uh, City Manager's budget under Professional and Contractual Services.
Okay.
Yeah, and now that, if you go to the budget book, there's a note on it that says, well, it breaks it down. So it's about, I think that's a hundred thousand dollars. And then, um, the call center was another hundred thousand dollars. That's because we would contract that service out. I know that's in there, yeah, I, I, I remember that. Yes, that's in there. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malazi. Um, Equilibrium's clerk? Is it?
That should be it.
Okay. I intend motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Probably second. Ready to discuss? All those in favor, please. Thank you for coming out.